Call the roll.
Kuz.
Here.
Harris.
Aye.
Carlson.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Seiberson.
Here.
West. Zingy. Here.
Thank you, please join me in the pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Alright, that brings us down to Communications. We have, what, public hearing first? Oops, sorry, public hearing. Public hearing on Resolution 142566, amending the 2014 General Government Annual Budget for Department $215, Police Department $4,000, Museum $8780, and Department 372,00628. Is anybody here to speak on those? CNN will close that public hearing. And now to Communications, which I believe we have some things laid on the table. Our Public Education Program on the ballot issues, revised list on the priorities, and that's it. Brings us down to persons to be heard. And first up, Kathleen Light.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Light. I'm the Director of the Arts Council. I live at 410 feet or lower. Haven't been there in a while, so my report is a little bit longer than usual, I apologize. I'll start out with our Main Street Gallery. In June, our exhibit was "The Middle of Nowhere." It was an exhibit by Anne Freshley. It brought 432 people through the gallery. In July, our exhibit was "Four Islanders." The artists were from Petersburg. P.O. Riley, Jovik, Nikki, Susan Christensen, and John McCabe. 518 people came through the gallery for that. And then, of course, in August was our Blueberry Arts Festival Art Exhibit. That's an open call exhibit. We had 28 artists in the gallery that month, and 1,201 people came through the gallery in the month of August. That's a total from June to the end of August of 2,151 people through the gallery, so that's pretty good. Up next, in September, our exhibit is "Curio." I showed this to the Borough Assembly, and the utterly tacky trinket sort of got one of those Assembly members, but these are really tacky. His aren't so tacky. So, this is a really fun show. It's open call. It's all handmade stuff that people are making, and we have had a great collaboration from the museum with historical pieces and images of the tourism industry historically in Ketchikan. So it's a really fun exhibit. The opening is this Friday at 5:00 PM, 5 to 7:00. Of course, you are all welcome, there'll be great treats there. Also, in August, our Blueberry Arts Festival happened, as you know. We believe it was one of the biggest ones we've seen. We had 140 booths. Of the 140, 100 of them were artist businesses. That's pretty significant. We added a few new programs this year. Our ultimate goal is to move the Blueberry Arts Festival all the way down Main Street so it's just packed the whole distance, so going forward. We added a few new programs. We did a musical instrument petting zoo this year to let kids try out the instruments with their parents there so they could go back to school with an idea of instruments that they might want to play in band. It was very successful. We didn't realize what would happen. A lot of adults were trying the instruments, which was kind of fun. Also, we added a youth portion to our poetry slam. We only had a few kids recite, but they were amazing, really well-composed children. I mean, they're standing up there reading these really meaningful poems just so eloquently. It was great. So we're gonna do that again as well. Okay, if you remember, back in the fall, we applied to the Alaska Arts Education Consortium for Ketchikan on behalf of Ketchikan to host the Basic Arts Institute. It's never been in Ketchikan, and we thought it might be time for that. So they did come. This is a program that is paid for by the Alaska Arts Education Consortium, and this year, the school district paid for the teachers to participate. So it's a two-week intensive professional development training course. 22 Ketchikan teachers participated, and one person from Hollis came to participate. In addition to gaining new tools to motivate and increase student learning through the arts, they built a lesson plan based on what they learned in the institute that they can develop over time as they hone their skills. The teachers also accumulated four graduate-level university credits, which is pretty awesome for their professional development. At the end of the two weeks, the teachers had a public presentation out at Saksman to show off what they'd learned. They danced, they sang, they drummed, they performed tableaus, theater tableaus of concepts, and they presented visual art pieces. It was a really great performance. They were very proud of themselves. They did some awesome, awesome work. This obviously wasn't part of our budget. We didn't spend any money, but we spent a lot of time assisting the institute, being the local liaison, hands-on coordination. And we also were able to program artists from our community to present to the teachers how they use their artwork to educate out in the world. So, we had Yvonne Zurbats present, Holly Churchill present, Alan Astron, who's a young photographer, we had him present to sort of show what the arts can do for young people. And then First City Players and KTB presented what they know the arts do for kids. Also, in August, we had the Executive Director and the Arts Education Program Director of the Alaska State Council on the Arts come and visit. They visited during the Basic Arts Institute, and they also presented to those teachers, but they presented to the new Curriculum Director and a handful of principals to talk about the artists in the schools program that the state does. And this is a program that schools can apply to for a 50-50 match to bring artists to their school to do big projects. And those projects are arts-based, but they relate to the curriculum in the classroom which they're visiting. So they're great programs. We also took the representatives to visit quite a few artists in our community, as well as the Carving Shed, the Totem Heritage Museum, the Historical Museum, and First City Players and the Performing Arts Center. We also set up meetings with the band and the chorus and KTB to talk to the State Arts Council about potential operating support grants that they can be writing that they aren't doing yet, so that was a great opportunity for them. We had a question-and-answer forum for the candidates for the House Representatives that focused on issues that relate to the arts and artists and the arts organizations of Ketchikan. About 28 people attended. It was really great. It was our first go at it. We want to do a little bit more of that. And then, coming up here in September, I'm gonna be attending in the couple of weeks the Americans for the Arts Local Arts Edu... Nope, this is a long name. Local Arts Agency Executive Leadership Forum. And this is a nationwide forum of arts leaders brought together to discuss policies surrounding models for healthy and vibrant communities through the arts on a local level. This forum is in conjunction with the annual National Arts Policy Roundtable, which is a convening of high-level national decision-makers, and they're gonna recommend national policies and strategies critical to the arts and American society. So those two things are happening in conjunction, which is really exciting. Our forum will have meetings with the national forum to discuss how technology can be used more effectively to make art a more impactful educational and community engagement tool. So that's where I wanted to get to. They're talking about how technology and the art can combine to make a more vibrant community, and I think that's something that the community of Ketchikan can, and certainly the Arts Council, can do a lot better, so I'm really looking forward to that. Only 20 people nationally were invited to attend this forum, so it's pretty exciting that we got invited from Ketchikan to go. Also, in September, coming up really soon, if you remember, we were selected to participate in the New Pathways Alaska Program, which is an organizational development program that the Rasmussen Foundation funds. It's administered by EMC Arts, which is a nationwide arts agency, and we were selected. 10 organizations in Alaska were selected, and we were selected. So that starts in September. And this is a year-long program. We're really excited to participate. So, that's it.
That's it.
That's it. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Kathleen.
Okay, thank you.
Chuck, you're up.
Good evening. Chuck Slagle, 737 Harris Street, and I'm here to talk about the cap on the nonprofits. And my concern is that, as I've mentioned before, that 20 years from now, our kids and our seniors can afford to actually live or want to live in Ketchikan. And I think we have a $45, or some $40-some million budget, and a lot of our issues, I think, are that we don't really take a look at where we're spending our money as compared to value, talking about a cap on the nonprofits. I don't know what that is, $380,000, $400,000, or something to put into the nonprofits. We spent $380,000, are prepared to spend $380,000 just for PND to do the portion of the contracting or the design for this change over at the Thomas Basin. So, I think what we have is a problem where we don't take a look at really value. I mean, we're separating business from the public sector, which is you guys, from the nonprofits, and actually, they're much more blended together than we actually realize, or should be, to make things tick. So, putting a cap on the nonprofits, I think, says the wrong thing. Nonprofits, I don't think we have any idea. I don't think it's common knowledge about the extent that the nonprofits contribute to this town, because we only focus on the ones that are asking for money. From soccer to seniors, there are people contributing to this community. And when we turn around and say that the nonprofits at $400,000 need to be capped because that's a terrible waste of money on a budget of $45 million, it says the wrong thing. The nonprofits do a lot to save money in this town. I mean, there's a lot of people that have mental problems, or health problems, or family problems, that end up being embraced by a church or a nonprofit agency and doesn't even end up costing us. It doesn't end up at the hospital. There's a lot of leveraging that goes on. You don't see Rasmussen standing in front here offering you money. Rasmussen is turning around and offering the nonprofits money. In other words, we talk about grants being brought to town. It's the enthusiasm of the nonprofits and their volunteers that are bringing this money to town. They're true multipliers of bringing money to town. And as far as strengthening the community, it's almost embarrassing that in really educated, efficient, capable people that move to this town, they don't come here to be a city council member, because they look at the quagmire that we get in. You see them show up on the boards of the nonprofits. Here's people that have spent their whole life being effective businesspeople or, you know, making a good contribution to society, and they come to town, and they look at town, and they recognize that these nonprofits will give the biggest return to the community for their time invested, and they show up on the boards of these nonprofits. Bill Moran was on the First City Board for 10 years, for God's sakes. He wasn't on the city council. He looked at, how could he contribute to this community, and he chose that. So, as far as saving money, we don't really recognize how many family issues or other issues are stopped by nonprofits before they even get to our safety net in town. And we don't, I think, recognize what the nonprofits can do from a multiplication standpoint. They are the vehicle. That volunteer effort is what attracts grants, what attracts people to put money into town. And as far as strengthening our community, you don't have people, when you ask somebody why they moved to this town, they don't say, "Well, we've got good sewer pipes." You know, they just don't say that. Not that that isn't, infrastructure's not terribly important, but I think we turn around and attach too much value to it. I think it's a value thing. We got $45 million to spend. Spending it all on infrastructure at the expense of what people choose or really find valuable is not a good thing to do. And I think that putting a cap on it just says the wrong thing. It says, "These things aren't important." Because they should be judged on value. That doesn't mean some of them shouldn't be denied. KJ, I agree with you completely. Some of them may be a waste of citizens' money. But you look at some of them, when you take and give in 20, or 40, or 50 grand to an organization that has 2,000 hours of volunteer help, talk about return on investment, come on. I mean, you're getting a return on that investment. So, I don't think the issue is putting a cap. I think you guys need to do what you volunteered to do and make a value judgment. Say, "Just like PND should..." Are we getting $380,000 out of PND to engineer that dock thing there? Are we getting $380,000 out of the nonprofits? Or who's got the value there? I think it's a value issue, anything else. So I think it's a mistake to put a cap, if for no other reason than it says the wrong thing to the thousands and thousands and thousands of hours of volunteer that goes in to make this community something special. I talked to, I don't know how many people I talked to, come into town and say, "It's such a welcoming town. This person helped me out. This person did this." That's the result of having a giving attitude in town. We shouldn't, at the very top of here, say that we don't support that in every way, because we get too much back from it. Small investment, big return. That's my humble opinion.
Thanks, Chuck.
Alright.
Next, Nancy.
Nancy McNulty, Talbets, 1101 Thomas Avenue. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. Two days ago, we received a stack of papers from the city manager about the easement from the Berthfor Uplands to Talbets. I'm not sure if copies of those were provided to you. The documents the city gave us did not include numerous communications from Talbets to city officials related to this matter, and we ask the mayor to form a working group comprised of a council representative, Talbets, and the city staff to work together in good faith to arrive at a long-term mutually agreeable resolution of the use of easement and other relevant issues associated with Berthfor. Thank you.
I'll be getting ahold of you, Nancy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to Robert Holston.
Robert Holston, 11380 Alderwood Street North. I believe Kathleen apologized about the length of her hair. Well, this is the longest I've ever worn my hair in my life, but I make no apologies for it. I'd like to read briefly from an article that was in the newspaper here locally. Just a little over a year ago, the headline is "Castro pleads guilty: Life in prison for kidnapper." It's from Cleveland. A man accused of imprisoning three women in his home and subjecting them to rapes and beatings for a decade avoided the death penalty Friday, pleading guilty in a deal that will keep him in prison for life. And I think you may recall from that brief reading from this article what the situation The rescue of these three women brought shocking allegations that Castro fathered a child with one of the women, included five miscarriages in another by starving and punching her, and assaulted one with a vacuum cord around her neck when she tried to escape. Castro told the judge he was addicted to pornography, had a sexual problem, and had been a sexual abuse victim himself long ago. He pled guilty to 937 counts in the deal. Why is this any business of yours or mine? About three years ago, I was a customer of your competitor. I did not have KPU internet or cable TV. And came home after like a K-Hiking basketball game or something late at night, flipped on what I thought was gonna be SportsCenter, and it was full-blown pornography on my television set. It was a SportsCenter channel, I make no mistake. And that very week, I went down and switched over to KPU, because I didn't like that stuff thrown in my face. And KPU, I understand, you know, sells pornography just like your competitor, but last, I don't know, some time ago last spring, when I was watching my SportsCenter or something, I wanted to go from Channel 29 on KPU up to Channel 30 to see what was happening with the other sports channels. All of a sudden, it thrust me into the so-called adult entertainment section of what you people sell. So I started to write down some of the things that it was showing me. It would just throw these titles there on the screen. SportsCenter was gone, but I was having there on my screen an advertisement for Dirty-Talking Masturbating Moms, Horny Young Housewives Hot and Wet, All-Girl Porn Stars, Sex Starve Hidden Camera Spread Fest, Explicit Muff-Licking Ladies. These are just the titles that KPU was selling. And, you know, I don't have a doctorate in sexual deviant behavior, but my wife is a counselor. She's dealt with lots and lots and lots of people. And, you know, when we give the pledge of allegiance to the flag, it's "One country under God," and I don't, a lot of your things here we're deciding about is the quality of life in our town. And yet, the city owns KPU, and you're selling pornography. Now, when I had discussed this with a couple of KPU employees, they said, "Well, gee, you can get that on the internet." Well, yeah, that's like saying, "Why shouldn't you deal in methamphetamines? Because you can get it over there, or you can get it over there." So I'm asking the city to strongly consider that pornography is not something that they should be in the business of selling. And I would ask that you would order a report from the head of KPU to find out what their revenue is from it, what portion of the revenue it is so you can actually, you know, know how much it's costing you or paying you. But there's only one reason why it's there now. It's to line the coffers of the public, the city. And I think that's a poor excuse. I think the city has to rise to bit higher standards than that. Families are ruined due to pornography. Marriages are ruined due to pornography. It's not just a men problem anymore. It's, and, you know, I'm a member of a church. It's openly discussed in church. Pastors around the country have huge problems with pornography. The women in this country are subject to pornography, and they're victims of it as well. About a third of all addicts are women. So, we're talking something that pervades our culture, but we're talking here to people who provide it to the culture. And I'm asking you to reconsider that. When each of you run for office, you need to come up down on one side or the other. You're either in favor of the city selling pornography, or you aren't. And that's what I would ask you to do over the course of the next couple of weeks. Make your position known. I think I've made my position known, and I would ask you to do the same. Stand up for what you feel is right, and I thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Alright, that's the last person that's on the list.
Oh, no, Eric, you're on the list. Why not?
Good evening. Eric Lynch, 228 Martin Street in the city. And I'd like to talk about the item about going on record opposing the initiative to legalize marijuana statewide. This item should not be in the consent agenda to start with, as though there cannot possibly be any other view to consider. That, I believe, was an arrogant assumption on the part of whoever put the agenda together. My feeling is you should leave it alone. This is a citizens' initiative, and you are not talking to fellow politicians. Most people will pay no attention to what you do today. Marijuana use is common and fairly widespread in the general population, and it's commonly available to those who want to use it. Use is minimally affected by its legal status, except by people to whom it would be described as a medication. It has, over the years, proven to be minimally harmful. Health-wise, no worse than tobacco or other smokes. As far as violence and risky behaviors concerned, it's much less dangerous than alcohol. Main problems arise when people, mostly young people, become dependent on it to achieve a state of calm and to relieve stress. And that's why it should be regulated for minors as tobacco is, which is part of the issue. The most harmful effect of prohibition, needless limits on people's freedom, creates otherwise unnecessary criminal classification, creates a criminal record that hurts reputations for no societal benefit. Also, it provides a sometimes dangerous group of smugglers and dealers with a lucrative business opportunity. The most beneficial effect of prohibition is to keep lots of law enforcement people, lawyers, and testing labs busy, at great public expense, even though it does no long-term good. It became an initiative and a people's choice issue because most politicians were afraid to touch it. And those who do, most of those, tend to keep their heads down and are pretty much predictable in their opposition. So, my advice is the council should take no stand, either to support or in opposition to the initiative, because most people won't pay any attention to what the city council says on the issue anyway.
Thank you very much, Eric. Anybody else here to address the council tonight? CNN will move on to the agenda. Brings us down to consent agenda. I was looking, I was gonna throw out a couple ideas to add to it. I was gonna add 782, 784, 785, 786. Any objections to those?
Yeah, I objected 2 and 6 being put on there.
Six, okay, and 2. How about 8? You guys wanna talk about the cooperative relations, or just approve it for another?
I'm just gonna approve it.
Okay, just put 8 on there, then. So what I have is 784, 5, and 8 to add to the consent agenda.
Not 2?
Not 2. Say again? Oh, I forgot about that. No, let's add 6A1. Second reading.
Have the code change.
Alright, do you have a motion to consent?
Yeah, I move to consent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. That, Madam Clerk, can you read the items?
Approval of man is regular city council meeting of August 21st, 2014. Amendment to contract number 1332, replacement of Thundering Wings Totem Nathan Jackson. Budget transfer amendment to 2013 Audit Services Contract, Mika Richardson &amp; Company. Amendment number 2, contract number 12-05, Drag Down Ramp, PND Engineers Incorporated. Vacation of right-of-way as detailed in Ketchikan Gateway Borough Planning Department, Planning Commission, Plating Board, Resolution Number 3891A, a request by Crescent Key LLC to vacate a portion of Copper Ridge Lane. Resolution Number 142568, opposing the passage of the initiative to legalize recreational marijuana in Alaska, and urge voters to defeat ballot measure number 2. Ordinance Number 141761, repealing subsection 15 of Section 13.09.010A of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Designated Penalty for Violation, second reading. Amendment Number 3, contract number 1337, Thomas Basin Sewal Design, PND Engineers Incorporated. Budget transfer, change order number 6, final to contract number 1238A, City Hall Exterior and Interior Renovations, Dawson Construction Incorporated. Resolution Number 142567, extending the city of Ketchikan, Ketchikan Gateway Borough Cooperative Relations Committee for an additional two-year term to November 1st, 2016.
Thank you. Matt and Judy.
Yeah, I just have a question on the Cooperative Relations Committee.
Yes.
And why it was only an additional two-year. I know that we disagree at times at the table with the Borough, but I think it is with the Borough Assembly, but I think it's really viable, and I'm just, maybe the next time we need to look at extending this to five or 10 years. Because regardless, none of us really want it to go away.
Okay. Judy.
Yes, Your Honor, consent item 5A5. I am related to the folks... I am related to the folks that are the principals of Crescent Key LLC.
I don't see a conflict. Go ahead and vote. Anybody else? Yes.
I don't wanna poll the items, but I have a problem on 5A6 and 785.
Okay, so 5A6.
5A6 is the resolution's opposing passage.
Oh, you wanted to vote on that separate?
I'm not sure if I wanna pull it off. I just wanna make it a point to let everybody know I have a problem, I think.
Oh, okay.
You know, I'm cool, 'cause I kind of agree with Eric.
Okay. Glad you stated your opinion.
And I also wanna mention, if I could, that, and I've talked with Dave Martin on this several times, I have no problem on the final thing for the paying off, paying off the change order for exterior and interior renovations from Dawson. Except we still can't get the front door to quit squicken. Downstairs, you pull on that door, it makes a funny noise every time and they tell me they can't fix it and I'm thinking for $3 million, that oughta work real well. So I'm assuming it's still on the punch list, I believe is what they call that.
Yep.
So, I'll be bringing it up later if it don't get fixed.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right, call the roll.
Harris?
Aye.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Kuz?
Here.
All right, that passes, I think, five to one. That brings us down to new business, 781, Museum Department Mission Statement corresponding core values. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Move the city council approved the mission statement and corresponding core values for the museum department as detailed in the August 22nd, 2014 memorandum with the museum director.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Matt?
I'm part of the committee for this task force and/or committee group and we have put a lot of time in. There were a lot of people who were working on subcommittees during the course of this summer to work through language and to debate language and make sure that it fit the best needs for our city. It was a really good public process. We had people from the public that were not on the committee that attended regularly and had input. I think it's a very valuable and viable part for the museum to, and the community to have this discussion and I think what they came up with was very balanced and representative.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Here.
Harris?
Aye.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. That's one, two, three, four, five, six, okay. Marty's missing. Thank you. All right, that brings us down to 782, City Ketchikan reimbursement, 2014 legislative reception. We have a motion.
Yeah, Your Honor.
You bet.
Yeah, I move the city council director, city manager to reimburse the Ketchikan Gateway Borough $3,750 representing one half the cost of the 2014 legislative reception in Juneau and authorize funding from the city council's community for motion account number 610, Title One.
Second. Moved and seconded. Dick, do you wanna talk to it?
Yeah, for just a minute, I, I think this right here is money well spent. We've done it every year up until this year and myself having sat on the Borough Assembly, the city council and also in Senator Stedman's office and attended these things numerous times, the, the business that is accomplished here with legislative staff from the senators and the Congress, and the representatives is just, it's outstanding. It's where you get a lot of things done, you accomplish things and money has been returned to this city many times over for what we do with that. And I, I don't know whether it was an oversight on the budget last time, but I think it's a trophian in working with the Borough Assembly to, to do this.
Matt, did you have something?
Single me out, huh? No, no, I, I do. We, if memory serves me correct, we had a debate about this at budget time when we cut it and part of the reasoning that I used at that time was, you know, we had members, sitting members of the Borough Assembly coming up and, and telling us to make hard decisions and tough decisions about our budget. Well, this was one of those things we could do. It's not a lot of money at all for us to have in there, but it's, it's something that, quite frankly, whether it's the city painter or whether it's, it's coming out of the KPU budget, we're kind of billing people twice when it should just come from one group. I agree with the manager's representation that this is a borough-funded issue on here. We pay for our people to attend, but the borough is the one that puts together the entire packet and we take care of all that. And I, I think, I think it's appropriate for the borough to fund that. I, I don't see why we're paying, this council is paying extra when other representative groups in there are not. So, I think the Borough Assembly can, can more than, more than fund the $3,750.
Okay, anybody else? Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, wherever the funding is gonna come from, you know, we, we attended a lot, I attended some of these when there was money in Juneau. And I think it did help bring money home and we were able to, I guess, sell our, our request. And now, with the finances of the state, I think it's even more important for Shoreface and Juneau and continue to try to bring some of that money home. We have some very costly projects that we need to make them fully aware of, that they're important infrastructures in our community and they need to be there. Looking for money.
Matt?
Nothing's stopping us from going and attending this.
Yeah.
It's just, I mean, we can still attend, so.
All right, call the roll, the two around.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Olson?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, that passes six to one. That brings us down to number 783, contract 1338A, construction services for the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project. Are you okay with that?
I'm fine.
Leighton Dawson Joint Venture Construction. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the city council approved contract number 1338A, construction services for the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project in the amount not to exceed $45,207,269 between the city of Ketchikan and Leighton Dawson Joint Venture Construction, authorizing funding from the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Capital Account and direct the city manager to execute the contract documents on behalf of the city council.
Second. Moved and seconded. Before we talk about, Carl, do you wanna explain what you negotiated?
Essentially, Mr. Mayor, this is Leighton Dawson's guaranteed maximum price for the project. They will bring it in for this amount, assuming there's no change in scope, the actual expenses are less than the full amount of benefits will accrue to the city. In going through the process, we put a very heavy emphasis on trying to preserve as much as possible from the bond proceeds to fund the cost of Phase Two. As the numbers are currently on the spreadsheet, we believe we'll be able to bring over just under $8 million for Phase Two of the project. And that's added to Peace Health's commitment, that's gonna represent about 43% of the cost of Phase Two. That cost could increase if we do not draw down contingencies, either the city's contingency or the contractor's contingency. We're still fairly early on, but contract drawings are now at 100%. Leighton Dawson has given us the guaranteed maximum price. If the numbers do reflect what would be reality in two years, I think that's gonna put us in a pretty good position, being able to go back to Juneau and ask for a 50% match for Phase Two. So I'd like to extend my compliments to Leighton Dawson, Doll HKM, Cliff Allen and Matt Brown for their, their extremely diligent work on this. This has been a pretty arduous negotiation.
And what was our original number we thought this was gonna be at?
Total for Phase One was about $57 million.
$57. And what did we cut out of there, just to brief?
There are a number of things that, you know, run the gamut. There's a, a list that was included in the, the transmittal memo, you know, from Jay Farmall of Doll HKM. I would tell you that our last weekly construction meeting, Peace Health representatives indicated that they'd like to see a number of these things restored and that they felt they could do a successful fundraising effort to do that. I unfortunately was not at that meeting, but the message that we are now conveying back to Peace Health is, if you wanna do fundraising, that's fine, but you've gotta give us a written commitment, regardless of your fundraising efforts, that you will, you will pay for these items if we're gonna return them to the scope. So they have to make a decision now, that they either commit to pay for them or I'm not gonna go on good faith and start incurring costs as the project goes along and then find out later that Peace Health can't raise the funds. So we have not had a response to that, but that, that's the position, I think.
Bob, did you wanna say anything?
No.
Anybody else? Matt?
I'm, I'm just pleased the cost came in low and that we're gonna have funds left over for Phase Two and hope that we can, over the next couple of years, convince the state that even if, even if we need more than 50% match, that is well worth it since we didn't get the 50% match on the first phase.
All right, call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Here.
Harris?
Aye.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Carl, thank you, thank you everybody else. It was a ball, that's some good news. That brings us down to 786, Resolution 142566, amending the 2014 general government budget to provide supplemental appropriations for fire department, police department, museum and harbor. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Move the city council approved Resolution Number 142566, amending the 2014 general government operating capital budget to provide supplemental appropriations for the fire department in the amount of $215, the police department in the amount of $4,000, the museum department in the amount of $8,780, the harbor department in the amount of $372,00628 and establishing an effective date.
Second. Moved and seconded. Matt?
Yeah, I just had a question about the funding for the harbors here. When we look at this, I'm always really careful about what happens with the funds we bring, we bring in from the raw fish tax. So, this is over and above what we brought in to pay for the drive-down ramp, is that correct?
Port Harbors Director Steve Copron. Bob can correct me if I'm wrong, what the intent was, we didn't use the contingency on the drive-down float. And our portion of the funding that was from the raw fish tax. So the intent was then to put that contingency then in towards 1 and a 9 to help make up a small difference we had in awarding that contract.
And those are large boat fishing vessel floats, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's the biggest ones, yes, sir.
I just wanted to make sure that, 'cause.
Yeah, I wouldn't have recommended it otherwise, but I, I knew it was a much easier sell that way.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Olson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yeah.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes six to nothing. That brings us down to the, public defender's contract, we have either option to renew it with Dennis or go out to solicit proposals. Does anybody have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move that city council also, it's the city manager, to negotiate a new public defender's service contract between the city of Ketchikan and law office, Dennis L. McCarty Attorney at Law for a two-year term beginning January 1st, 2015, and an option to renew the additional one-year period. Set agreement to be submitted to the city council for humble consideration approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Bob, do you wanna add anything?
No, I think we're pretty well spelled out in here in the memo that we had.
Yes, yeah.
Have we ever had anyone express any interest in wanting to bid on this when it came up?
No.
Or no young guys out of college wanting to work?
Call the roll.
Kuz?
Here.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, that passes six to nothing. That brings us down to 789, Discussion of Capping Committee Agency. Councilmember KJ Harris.
Well, I believe it was my, my mistake when I mentioned that to Katie, I didn't wanna cap it. I just wanted to talk with the council and find out, and I was the one that said it, it wasn't Katie's fault. I probably said capping, I just wanna find out where the council is, 'cause I think last year we spent $55,000 and some change on that, which is a little bit more than we were supposed to. And I just, because we have a six and a half, six and a half percent tax now and we're charging whatever it is, or we're getting 3.24, however they figure it out. I'm just curious, will the council just automatically gonna let that amount go or whether we're gonna hold it where it was, or whether we're gonna start letting, as we spoke of last year, which I'm not holding anyway to, we spoke of possibly we're taking a 10% cut. And I'm just wanting to find out, 'cause it's getting to be budget time. If nothing else, everybody think about what they're planning, recommending, 'cause I have nothing in my mind yet.
Question of management, with the increase in the sales tax, does that, how does that affect the formula that Bob put together?
For 2014, the adopted budget for community agencies was $358,000, which included the money that was appropriated for the small business development center. Using the same formula and projecting for 2015, recognizing that the council increased the sales tax rate, we would project a $390,000 appropriation for community agency funding for a percentage increase of 8.9%.
I think that would definitely be a talking point during budget.
Judy?
I guess for me, I'd like us to look at who's all in this. I mean, to me, Historic Ketchikan, Ketchikan Arts and Humanities, First City Players, Alaska Small Business, those agencies are more economic development and I would be looking to take those out of there if I had the rest of council interested in doing that. And I guess I have a question of how were they funded before? As they, as I understand it, they weren't always part of this system.
Go ahead, Carl.
Historically, up until recently, Historic Ketchikan and the Ketchikan Area Arts and Humanities Council were funded 100% out of Ketchikan Public Utilities. The other agencies, with the exception of the KDB, were funded out of the general fund and KPU did fund a portion of that.
There was a, there was a time when KPU did pay a portion of the financials from local to time it was, it was a general fund.
The KDB is funded through the transient tax that's.
No, 50% for enterprise fund and 50% economic development.
That's right, that changed. So, they're not, the KDB is not funded out of the general fund.
Do you have anything else?
So we do have an economic development fund?
It's a parking and economic development fund, it's not a revenue generating fund, so there's a finite limit to that fund.
Yeah, when we do budget time, you know, Carl, you know, we loan money out to KPU and such. Can you, when we do the budget, can you have us thing in there showing what counts or do what money?
I can do that.
Thank you. Deanne?
When you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, that previously some of these agencies were funded 100% other, outside of this community agency grant funding, when you say 100%, who defined that number?
That was the council and it was all part of the community agency grant program, it was just different funding sources. So if you were to take First City Players, traditionally they would have been funded out of the general fund. The Arts, Ketchikan Arts, Ketchikan Area Arts and Humanities Council and Historic Ketchikan were funded exclusively from Ketchikan Public Utilities and I think the rationale. Public Utilities. And I think the rationale for that was the programs that they offered were enjoyed by residents on an area-wide basis. And since everybody does electric and telephone on an area-wide basis, K P U was the appropriate funding mechanism.
Um, you know, before the meeting, I was, was a little perturbed because I feel like, you know, we get beat up because we spend money and we get beat up because we don't spend money. And this was one of those areas where we really kind of taken the brunt of, um, some unpleasantness over the years. And my thought was, why, why can't, you know, things be more self-sufficient? Why can't they figure out a way to generate, you know, some, and, and they do. I mean, God bless them. They do a lot of different fundraising and, and different things, but it's just never enough. And then after Mr. Slegel spoke, I was really surprised at how much more open-minded I became, at how much these agencies really do bring to Ketchikan and the trickle-down effect that we all benefit from it. So it really brought a whole different kind of, um, um, way of viewing the agencies that I hadn't really been prepared to accept before. So I think it's going to be another tough one. I, you know, it just comes down to we never have enough for what we all want to accomplish. So, but I thought Mr. Slegel's comments were interesting. I'd never truly contemplated the trickle-down effect and, and just the, you know, the outline of support that all these different agencies provide in one way or another from our little bit of contribution that we give them. So it was pretty, pretty eye-opening.
Anybody else? Matt?
I, I really, really, really dislike constantly changing the rules on people. I believe we have to be consistent, and if we're not consistent, um, it throws a wrench in a lot of different things. We have this funding mechanism that we worked out only three years ago after relatively being stable, I think, for about ten years in funding and then a huge upheaval came. And we changed the whole entire process for these groups. And we made huge, like, just a, a, a change that was going to make it so that if there is a down economic year, there, it would be reflected in what we gave. And I, I think that funding mechanism, the three point two four percent, which I, at that time I felt was low anyways, and it did result in some agencies getting lower funding. Um, I think it's remiss of us to sit here and all of a sudden change it and change a, a funding mechanism or any type of formula on somebody without really seeing how it first plays out. We all have our favorite agencies. We all have our least favorite agencies. But I think the name of the game here is being consistent, doing what's right for our community as a whole, because these agencies, all of them are economic development. Every one of them in some form. And for a majority of them, I think they're all social programs. We are not Juno. We are not Anchorage where these community agencies can go out and fundraise and bring in a lot of money, because we're not, our, our communities don't have the economic base and the people taking home the higher-end salaries that those other communities have. And so these agencies sprint by, and they sprint by from what they can get from the public in terms of programs, and they sprint by from what they get from us. And I think if we continue to keep slashing, we're going to see some very, very viable programs in this community that really enhance our community, um, disappear.
Thank you, Sarah. Judy?
I guess then my question would be, why is the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau funded separately and not part of this? I mean, aren't they?
We're finding new ways to fund it so we can.
So why can't, I mean, I guess I just don't understand why they're not, if we're going to put people in one pot, why aren't we putting everybody in that pot? It'd make, I mean, it's.
Funding sources to make it easier to fund, because we're able to shift them out and use some other funds that didn't come out of the general fund or out of the taxes. We used a lot of that head tax money. So we're finding ways not, uh.
So why wouldn't we use head tax money for Historic Ketchikan and the Ketchikan Arts and Humanity Council? Why would not fall under that, I guess?
Yeah, we can ask management to try to make a case for it.
Mr. Mayor, we're no longer using head tax money for the K V B. Fifty, fifty percent port, fifty percent economic.
Oh, that's right. We use the port funds and, then use the head taxes.
From the civic.
Yeah, okay. All right, um, it sounds like we're already talking budgets. Sounds good.
I, but I still didn't get an answer, I guess.
It's just, I guess, you can, um, I mean, you can put it in there. It's up to the council. Like we used to, you know, when we had those guys being funded out of K P U, you know, we were just finding ways to fund things and be able to fund them all and try to cut it out of the general fund, you know, the ta, general, we didn't want to raise taxes. And so we found way, other ways and to fund these things. And that's how a lot of this happens, is you're looking for ways to fund these out of the, and not out of the general fund.
Well.
You bet.
I guess, you know, part of Historic Ketchikan's goal is to promote economic development and tourism while preserving our history. So they're also dealing with tourism, and I guess I don't understand why would we pick the K V B and not Historic Ketchikan? I mean, I'm just.
Yeah.
Wondering why we're leaving one out and everybody's not all included.
We can, yes, Bob?
Yeah, and to build a little bit on what Matt said, um, before we put in some kind of a formula, it was really inconsistent. It was, we never knew what the number was going to be. We would have during the budget session, uh, a period set up where every agency in town came with an ask. And there was no criteria, uh, to judge it by. We didn't have, we didn't look at their budgets. We didn't look at their programs. We had nothing consistent to work off of. So it bounced all over the place. It was crazy. So I think the intent here was, as Matt said, is to try to build some kind of consistency. Now, I don't think we thought about what would happen when we raised sales tax, how that would affect this particular formula. And that's something that we can definitely look at. But, um, I, I think that there has to be a process in place where we work with it. Now, whether we're going to do, uh, humanitarian things versus economic development stuff or tourism or whatever, I think that's a decision the council can make, um, as far as its policies to move forward and where those funds come from. I don't disagree that Historic Ketchikan potentially could be funded out of, um, some of our, um, tourism money, because they do, uh, give a great benefit to that industry by the work that you run town.
It's a good question to bring a budget time so we can try to make it work. Did you have something?
Well, I just wanted to say, because I, I'm, you know, following up a little bit on what Judy had mentioned. So basically, the money, it's like a cost shift. I mean, we look for different pots of money, so to speak, that we can utilize outside of what we need to run the city, um, that don't affect our, our actual city big pot of money, but we can still trickle down some of this money to these other agencies and stuff. I think it's just confusing as to how that is all developed and brought about. I mean, you know, when you're saying things like the ports and the head tax and the tourism and the, those are all just kind of, um, you know, words that are flying around. But I think that budget time, it would be really helpful to really pinpoint what that means out of that line item and that line item and that line item. And if we didn't do it out of those, what would be the exposure to the general fund, you know, just so it more educates or redefines, I guess, how that criteria is brought about.
Yeah, the, um, before Bob came up with his idea, everything came out of the general fund. That's why we got really creative. Bob?
Yeah, and you bring up an important part about how this balances into our overall budget. As you can see, we have a number of budget, budgetary issues that we're going to move into where revenues are short. And then you start looking at reducing services, laying off people. We, and we're not mandated to fund nonprofits. That's not a mandate. We are responsible for managing the community and providing the services. We have to decide whether we want to cut those services, cut those people, shrink back and continue to fund that. But that's a decision that we made at budget time when we really look at the numbers.
Deanne?
But with that in mind, you know, if for some odd reason we decide to not fund the homeless shelter or the day shelter, then as a community, we're going to take that on our shoulders or someone is going to be exposed to that expense. So, you know, I, I don't think there's a win-win ever out of it, but, um, I just think it's probably something that we're going to have to really work to keep in, you know, in the front of our, our thought processes when we're going about, you know, yang and nang and cutting and adding and stuff. That somewhere, someone's going to have to provide some support for those things if they go away.
KJ, want to finish it?
I just want to thank the council to take the time to chat about this, because it's the first actual conversation I can remember. Many, many council meetings just on this subject, and I'm just glad we got to bring it up slightly here, other people's ideas before the budget time gets here, because this is a big thing for us.
Well, thank you for bringing it up, because I forgot that they would, that with the increase in sales tax, that would go up.
And my apologies for calling it capping. I didn't mean to say that.
Carl, did you want to add something?
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification purposes, absent direction from the council, you know, we will present the, the budget based on the formula and we'll have one line item appropriation for community agencies excluding the K V B, uh, as I described earlier. But there will be no allocation between agencies, because that's traditionally up to your committee to be done in February. So I don't know if we will have the discussion. I mean, it can be raised. Uh, and then the K V B, I'm going to find, again, absolute constant direction, based on the fifty percent formula, you know, fifty percent port, fifty percent, uh, economic, parking and economic development.
Sounds good. We'll bring it up. All right, anybody else want to add anything? Oh, Matt?
One, just one quick question on that. Does that include the twenty-five thousand for small business development center or we reduce that?
Absent, other direction from the council will include the twenty-five thousand for the small business.
All right, let's move on.
Your honor.
Oh, it's.
You have to look at, so does K V B have to fill out the same sort of application and go through the same process that the rest of these nonprofit agencies have to go through?
I don't believe so, because they're not part of that committee thing anymore. They always provide all kinds of their budget.
They, they provide a package at the time, that comes to the council at the time I submit the budget.
Okay.
All right. That brings us to item number ten. FY two thousand sixteen community party list for transmitted to the governor. That was representing your council was me, Matt Olson and my manager, Amalai. Do we have a motion?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
Move the city council approve the lobbying executive committees October twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, community party list for transmitted to the governor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We didn't second it. Matt, did you want to talk to it?
Um, yeah, first off, I was a little hurt by the, uh, Daily News's headline that there was a whole bunch of, you know, made it sound like there was a lot of disagreement on the committee, when actually what we did was we did committee work.
Yeah, it was really good.
And we talked and we discussed. We made motions. Things were voted up, things were voted down. And when everyone left, I don't think anybody was mad.
No. I agree.
On the whole, the eight members looked at the list and went, we did a good job today. We can accept this as a community and, and walk out. So there was, it was, it was just one of the easiest committees I've served on in terms of joint committees in quite some time. And I fully support this.
Deanne?
So we've discussed, um, you know, in the last year, a lot of infrastructure issues, um, roadway issues, a bunch of different things that we know are coming to a head. And I'm always told that we have, you know, like with the sewer and waterline things, we have to bond so that we can get a portion funded from the state, you know, so we can't put our neck out there first and stuff. So all those things being said, I was a little caught off guard when a baseball field was on the list.
Yeah, the first I heard of it.
And I'm all for more playing fields, you know, four knee surgeries later, I'm still tempted to try. But that one really kind of caught me by surprise.
That came off the borough list, the support from, um, members of the committee, including me. Um, you know, a lot of our infrastructure stuff goes through the D O T, and so it doesn't, wouldn't be funded through this anyway, all those things, so.
But I think it's just the stigma.
Oh, okay.
I mean, how, I mean, we're always worried about how we look in front of the state for things that we're asking about. And here we have all these, you know, we need energy and hydro. And oh, by the way, can we get a baseball field? I just, I just, I'm sorry, it just kind of caught me.
Very good.
Uh, if we get one, great. Um, but I just found it.
We put it below the performing arts.
That's just my.
Anybody else? KJ?
Um, I have to agree with Deanne on a little surprise of seven, eight and nine. Now I see that AMHS working birth and Noah thing for nineteen million dollars. Isn't that a state thing? I'm, I'm just, I'm just confused.
You're echoing Mr. Olson.
And that's, uh, one of the reasons it went from number two to number seven. So we're saying we support it, but we put it down towards the bottom.
I thought this list always had seven things. Now it's got nine.
No, it had, it originally had eight. The only thing that was added was the ball fields, um, with the, at the behest of the, of the mayor. But we had, I, again, we had some very good discussion, and people were open and people were, were willing to listen. And this is what we came up with.
Did everybody agree to C E C O M that Swan Lake was number one? And, um, I think those top three are three really good ones. And so far in the last year, you know, in the last couple of years, whatever this group has put together is number one, um, the state has come through and funded. So that's why I like all three communities together agreeing, because it does pull some weight up there. So whatever, you know, um, we had C E P A last year. Before that, it was an airport thing for the borough and it got funded. Um, before that, it was something for us and it was got funded. So, um, you know, whatever we can get on top here, they, um, really, uh, seem to, um, come through on. A lot of the other things don't get funded, but they're on the list. So other groups and people and councils and things can go up there and, um, work on legislators instead of governors. So.
Call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yeah.
Harris?
Sure, I guess.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that brings us down to vouchers. Um, Daily News twenty-seven hundred, do we have a motion?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
I move for approval of a voucher that Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of two thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents. Second.
Call the roll.
Seaverton?
Yeah.
Kuz?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us down to managers report. Carl?
Just have three tonight, Mr. Mayor.
You bet.
We made on the table tonight some drafts pertaining to the public education campaign for the ballot propositions for the water and sewer projects. Councilmember Harris had requested that the council have a chance to review those. Uh, there are a couple of typos that have already been pointed out.
Hey, Carl, could you speak up?
Yeah, we are finalizing the ballot propositions, councilmember. It's the public education campaigns. Uh, I don't know if you received it via email, um, from the thirds today, but, uh, we want to get started on these. So I'm asking for city council authorization to, to move forward and finalizing the information to get it on the website and start a advertising program. So unless you want to direct me otherwise, Mr. Mayor, that's what I intend to do.
Okay.
Um, I also on the manager's report, uh, gave the council an update on our C I P for the cured and placed pipe. Uh, obviously, the estimate far exceeds the, the budget appropriation for that project. So what we're going to do is scale it back. This is the project on Tongus Avenue and, and, and putting a pipe within a pipe, uh, will downsize it to fit the budget. And, uh, again, the, the wastewater fund, um, is going to be a real challenge in the next budget. So I just want the council to be aware of that. Uh, the last one, uh, is on the K P U side and pursuant to previous council's direction, we did put out a request for proposals for peer review of C H Storm Hills, Two Point Corner Nation. Uh, we advertised it within the state and, and, and down on the Pacific North Rim. Uh, we advertised it within the state and, and, and down on the Pacific North Rim. Uh, Friday was the due date, we did not receive any proposals, so we can...
Well, I'll do it if you wanna give me the money.
I'm not sure that'd be a conflict in that vicinity. Um, we can re-advertise and try again if that's the council's, uh, desire. I'm not surprised, uh, peer reviews are not often a popular thing. We are gonna be moving ahead with discussions with DEC. As we've already told you, they're, they're already expressed interest to see reference to Two Point Chlorination within the compliance order by consent, so I'm looking for direction from the council.
Um, direct, what was that last thing again?
I'm sorry?
What was that last thing again?
I'm looking for direction from the council.
On, I tried to...
Was it you wanna, us to, again, try to re-advertise for the peer review, or do you want us to...
Judy, what do you wanna do?
Well, part of the reason that I had suggested this in the first place was many of the people who came up and spoke to us during this whole water thing, um, had a problem with CH2ML and didn't feel that they had given us the best advice, and I thought that this, you know, might be a way for us to really take a look at that. But I mean, if nobody's stepping up and wanting to do that, I really don't know that spending more money advertising is gonna help that. I don't think if anybody hasn't applied by now, they probably aren't going to.
Bob, did you have something?
Yeah, um, I had an opportunity to attend the meeting, see two employees here to talk about it, and, um, I'm real confident about the, the process that we're going through. I spoke with our Water Division and, and Management both. Uh, the plan seemed to be real, um, simple and laid out as far as the Two Point Chlorination is, and, uh, all the numbers seem to make it work, so I don't think that we need to go out and look for the peer review. Uh, we, we tried, there were no takers, um, I think, again, there would be money that I think we'd be, we'd spend, even if we had the time to get it.
Thank you. All right, Carl, anything else?
All I have is...
Any questions from the council? Anything?
Now, Lou?
Yeah, Bob, I need, Dick?
Uh, it's just one comment, uh, I know it's not the end of it, but the sales tax report is in my mind, if you're not careful, it's gonna be misleading, and that being the fact that for July, our budget showed two point two million, and, uh, the actual is two hundred thousand less than that, whereas the numbers there are showing that we are about twelve percent above last year's, but that last year's compared to what our budget is, means we're short two hundred thousand, not ahead two hundred thousand. So, just keep that in mind as we go forward. We're not getting the budget amount of sales tax in as we budgeted before, or with.
Dan?
I was wondering if we could get an update on the car house transition to the new building and how that's progressing?
Good idea. Matt?
I just forget, who's taking care of the stairs next to City Hall?
That's our Public Works Department, they will, it's on their list, they're gonna try to get them done before the snow flies.
Right.
All right. All right, that brings us down to City Clerk's file.
Uh, just, we need a date for staff evaluation tomorrow.
Um, since the twenty-fifth, we're, we're, I was thinking maybe, um, Carl, how big a agenda we're gonna have in the next meeting?
Uh...
And are you gonna be here?
No, I will not be here.
Then why don't we put the City Clerks on the next agenda, and let's try to do it, um, as long as Carl doesn't have a gigantic agenda, we'll start that, then...
I can tell you there will be three executive sessions that are already, um, agreed.
Well, let's try to do the Clerk's one then on that, and, now, when Carl gets back, we'll try, since we could come up with a date, let's give it a shot. So, let's start with the City, I mean, yeah, the City Clerk next meeting, and we'll go, we'll go work on Carl's chat.
Okay.
All right? Thank you. Um, City Attorney's file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Future agenda items? Mayor and Council comments? KJ?
Okay, number one, I wanna say, oh, and my opinion only, I don't speak for the whole council, I wanna thank Kathleen Light for all the hard work she does on her, on her little hardest thing, she's always up here, she's real go-getter, I think she does a hell of a good, yeah, have a good job. Okay? Um, for just general information, we, you, I believe you were asked to set up a working committee for the Talbets situation where at some point...
I was gonna get me and somebody from the...
I would, uh, vote against that. I don't think we need a committee, I think we have so many working committees now, and from what I'm, from what I'm talking with our attorney and our city staff, we are not in violation of anything. That's just on that, I wanna say that. Um, if anybody didn't see in the mailbox or whatever, Carlson, a real nice bunch of pictures and stuff up to Mr. Trump, I believe his name is, on the Mill Street project down there, just showing the concrete showing through the asphalt. We would do to lay another layer of asphalt on top of that crap. Maybe we'll get some state work on it, but I, I looked through the pictures today and went, wow, I live here, I see what those things are, they're actual pictures of the way our road looks. So, I just wanna say thank you for sending that up. And I wanted to clarify that five A six thing, that marijuana thing, I have talked to several of my constituents, our constituents, and many of them do not wanna say out loud how they feel. I have people that are married, one person is married to a police officer, she didn't wanna make her opinion vocal in, in public, and I'm not saying yea or nay, I just understand how a lot of people don't wanna say anything loud, out loud, how they feel one way or the other, and that's kinda where I am sitting on that thing right now. Fifty-one, forty-nine, and just haven't made up my mind yet, and that's all.
Sounds good. KJ? Bob?
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank all those people that sit on the different, various boards and committees that are pointed out here, sometimes those, uh, are time-consuming and, um, they always don't, uh, come with a easy reward, so, um, I'd like to thank everybody that does that and hope there's people that are still out there that are willing to continue to do that through their, their time. Um, and we just finished our SEPA meeting, I think that went very well, um, and, uh, we're moving forward with the design and, and potential talks about funding for Swan Lake.
Judy? Thanks, Bob.
Um, well, I guess back to this community agency grant, um, I appreciate that the way it was decided before I was a council member, I just, in my opinion, I don't feel that it's fair to all the agencies how we do it, and I just wanna go on record saying that.
Thank you. Dan?
I just wanted to kinda echo, um, KJ's thoughts on that resolution regarding the, um, initiative to legalize recreational marijuana. Um, I have just really mixed feelings about that as well, I mean, I've seen firsthand, you know, where it was a gateway drug for young people to move on to, you know, bigger, better, worse things, and I just, I can't help but think when I was younger and my parents all smoked, you know, the first thing I tried to do is steal their cigarettes. So, if it's in the house, what are the young kids going to start trying to mimic? I had, I have mixed feelings about that, because I also feel in some respects, what people do in the privacy of their own home, that does not affect me, shouldn't really be my business, but then if you take it a step further and you're out there on the road driving, now it's my business, so there's so many different caveats to it, it's, it's a moving target, I don't know how, uh, you know, something like this can be legislated, can, can, I guess they, I guess we'll just wait and see how things pan out.
Thank you. Matt?
I spoke more than...
Dick?
Yeah, uh, just one comment, uh, I'd like to thank Carl and Steve for the report on the, the first four non-exclusive pedestrian access, uh, having worked down there now for, on that dock, probably three days a week for three or four years, there is no restriction going to Miss Nancy's store, she is free and open, and, uh, what we're doing is absolutely okay, and we need to help those, cut those visitors get to where they need to go, and her store is not being restricted.
Thanks, Nick. Um, that brings us down to me. On Nancy, um, she did bring that piece of paper, she did have another concern, I was just going to get myself, somebody from the manager's office, and meet with her upstairs, let her express her concern, and then, um, anybody has, I mean, anybody has a concern and brings it to me, um, I'm willing to listen and deal with it, so I shall do it. Um, somebody from the council wanted to be there, great, otherwise I'm, I'll let her be here with me and the management. Um, on the, um, SEPA meeting, I was good meeting, it's great, Bob runs the meeting, I just sit at the, at the table. Um, we did, um, oh, vote for a rebate, the city will be getting, or KPU will be getting, um, over four hundred thousand in a rebate, um, for, for next year's budget, so during budget time, we should see that reflected. Um, otherwise, um, a lot of strong support for our continued Swan Lake, um, um, plan, and, um, I can't think of anything else. Anybody else have anything? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some move. Dave?
Thank you, everybody.